Okay, I will call the Special Finance Insurance and Personal Committee. Meeting reporter Roll Call Cool here.
Where do you?
New business, anyone have anything from the public to say that's not on the agenda?
Did you hear record? Did you hear record on that? Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Hearing none, resolution twenty twenty-five forty-four rescind the resolution twenty twenty-five thirty, purchase of the police squad.
Can I still speak or is there, we passed that, will you?
You want to speak on something that's not on the agenda?
Oh, no, okay, keep going. Sorry, misunderstood.
So apparently the police squad car that we were gonna purchase from Kaiser is no longer available. So we had a resolution to accept that and we're gonna have to rescind that. Also with the second one, twenty twenty-five dash forty-five is just an open resolution. I think according to Dennis today, he won't give the quotes back till after the next meeting, correct? It's gonna be pretty much the seventeenth at least, so we mounted this whole off and wait and see what we get for the following meeting.
Can I ask the silly question, is it necessary that it's... I mean, because now we're playing this game back and forth every time it cancels on us, that there's not a resolution where we can say not to exceed a certain dollar amount and let Dennis find the vehicle? Is that not prudent?
Just having an open-ended?
Well, it's not really open-ended, we're just gonna, it's a maximum amount because we keep doing this.
Okay, it would have to be worded in the resolution as a maximum amount, not to exceed and giving the authorization for the chief to make the call.
Right, I mean, it's up to you, what do you think Dennis, is it their time to charm, do you think we're gonna get it this time or?
We'll order it, so we will get it.
And we weren't ordering the last ones?
Well, we were, it was, we were supposed to get one that was coming in off an order that was existing, but the order wasn't filled completely, so we didn't get it.
Okay. So are you, do you feel comfortable coming with the quote and everything the next time and we're good? Versus just saying not to exceed whatever our threshold was?
We know exactly what it is next time.
Okay, alright, never mind then.
So I guess I'll take a motion for resolution twenty-five forty-four to rescind that previous purchase, to send that to council.
Where do we move to send resolution, request for approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-four to the city council?
Motion by Wired, second by Hazlitt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carried, resolution twenty-five forty-five, as I stated, we just had discussion on it, it's sort of open-ended, so I think we just wait until we actually have some quotes back and then address it at that time.
Where do we move to defer twenty twenty-five dash forty-five? Till we have updated information?
Gotcha.
It's, it's fine, I paused.
Motion by Wired, second by Hazlitt, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. And we see twenty twenty-six budget discussion, fire department lift chairs increase. Chad?
Oh, it's the lift chairs and light packs, we were notified last week that Stryker and Light Pack are gonna have an increase after the fifteenth of October, on anything after the October fifteenth, probably a three percent increase. So the question I had was, are we able to wish if we were, we were to order it prior to that, we would have the non-added-on number and not, not get it until twenty-six, we want to get it built up until twenty-six. But we would lock in that price before October fifteen.
So the light pack and the stair chair?
Light pack and the stair chair. They were, we got an email today saying the roughly about three percent increase on their annual increase.
That's enough, around a hundred and...
About a hundred and sixty.
Did they say anything about the maintenance contract that we haven't addressed yet?
The maintenance contract for the power terrace here is two years and the light pack is one year included. So we're working on them to, with that, putting that price in with the purchase of it for additional years.
But we don't know if that's gonna flesh out it?
Not yet, because they, they're working on like possibly up to a five-year contract, but they're saying if we go up to a five-year contract, then we give you a break on the years previous, but if we go year to year, it's going to be that fourteen, fifteen thousand, whatever we looked at before, that total number.
Fifteen thousand, four to five years?
No, if we were, if we were to go year to year on all the service contract on all the equipment, it would be that, I think it was actually seventeen thousand a year, something like that. And if we were to sign into a five-year contract, they didn't give me the number of what it was, we're working on that to get that number with them hopefully in the next few days.
But that'd be obviously less than seventeen then?
Yes, otherwise it doesn't make any sense for us to do that. So the question was, are we, do we have the ability to order it, the money's not going out until May of, May, June of twenty-six?
We've done that before?
We have. I think as far as the capital purchases, I think we were okay with those and the funding as we talked about before, we've done it in the past, especially the savings fund. That's a substantial enough money that it's good sense to do, but...
The year one thirty you have in there, I, I mean, I got a note written on it, I got a, what's the service contract? Was that one thirty assuming the light pack and the contract, is that what we were hoping that would be the?
That's what we were hoping, yeah.
Full number?
Yeah. We don't know how many years of the service contract, when we purchase the units, we get one year.
Right.
So we should be able to get at least a couple additional years out of, out of that hundred and thirty thousand, open at least a couple of years. Because it was, what, six thousand, yeah, four thousand a piece, or four thousand for the two light packs and then two thousand for the stair chair, per year.
So do you think these numbers are back from April or May for like the power load and the pro-power, which comes to about twenty grand, would that be pretty accurate then or?
Service contract wise?
Service contract wise.
Yeah, minus this year, this next year, minus the light pack and the stair chair, so you would take six thousand dollars off of that. And we can hold it until Monday, I just wanted to put it on your guys' radar and get some sort of idea if it was a possibility.
We're gonna have to do a resolution at some point, but I think we've authorized it through finance to move ahead with it, so we don't lose the pricing.
Right.
It's like a little down there, but it's only two, three, five years after that.
Be nice to squirt it off, have everything, because Wired's the same thing.
We could definitely ask them to see if they can work something up. That stuff gets even cheaper.
No, and that's, that is what they explained to us, they can't guarantee it year by year, so
Right.
this three years is gonna be at the twenty, twenty-five year.
Okay. So it would be the lift chairs and?
Light packs.
Light packs. Same vendors. Motion to proceed with that.
Yeah, I will make a motion to have the fire department order with delivery and payment in twenty twenty-six, the light packs and the stair chairs, as well as get us better information on the service contract.
Cool, second. Motion by Wired, second by Cool, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. General discussion on the budget, we have yet to address the clerk treasurers' operation budget. Lana, did you get this all? Looks like it changed today, I was looking at this form.
Yeah, I just had some updates on like our shared revenue, which went up slightly, which is good. Adjusted the, what we have as an estimate for the levy amount, because some of it changed with other departments, so that's one of the updates that I did.
What's your bank total, I got the check for some strange reason, is it the one at three thirty?
Yep.
Or ninety? Thirty-three, ninety-five, two forty?
Yep. Yeah, yeah, just some updates.
That's fine, thank you.
Some state aid went up a couple thousand, which is good. But other than that, you know, you can go through, ask questions, pretty much the overall, our budget, we tried very hard to keep it at where it was last, or even with some of the decreases in the levy part. So one thing to point out is the election maintenance, that's where I put it under, required, it says required to get purchased two new machines, and is the county pay for half?
Yes, so it would be about second grand for both, or half of the two machines.
Were there any vendors at your conference you could get a good deal on?
It's a same vendor.
Same vendor?
Yes, and...
County used to pay all of it, if they can't afford you anymore, they said.
Yeah, now we have to.
Yeah, so that was one of the changes. Other than that, it really, the only thing that's still open yet, and hopefully I'll have it soon, is the insurance numbers for the liability, just got some stuff this week from some of the departments, so where it was at. It's not really built out yet, but I don't know, like, one of the questions, we have economic development, I put six thousand in there, I don't know if you beat it up to still do that.
Isn't this what we paid you?
Is that, yeah.
Is that Thrive or whatever?
That's Thrive.
Okay, right, so that's, yeah.
Yeah, they haven't, I don't, I haven't seen any change here, they talked about any increases to, that they pulled aside. It's a dollar figure for the population.
Population.
Yeah. So that, that should be, that should be good, yeah.
Yeah, and the clerk's wages per certain portion of the TID, so that's pretty there. As you can see on some of the salary card, I did put some notes you guys can talk about. So other than that.
Did we remove some of that back in the project though?
We've not had that discussion, I was like, oh, is it still in, in TID?
So, yeah, other than that, insurance is updated correctly, retirement, all those things. See, not any really, the only surprises, the election equipment. Major, the Humane Society contract, Humane's same.
So, yeah, we did get that earlier, but change, we should take that with.
One adjustment I may need to do, a little bit is the government garbage billing. I left that the same as the current budget, but we're already over that, so I do have to make an adjustment to that one. And that's on page seven, but it's five-one, five-one, nine-zero, nine-zero-three.
That should be, that should balance out, or do we need to?
It should balance out, but every year we have, I don't remember what the percentage is, it does go up. And then we always have to make sure what we're having buried, put on our bills, because we usually have a buffer in there to cover some of those adjustments, but depending on how much it goes up, we may have to look at it if we have to do any adjustments.
We do have that on the fee schedule to look at.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're, we're, we put some, quite a few numbers in that fee schedule, so we'll have to.
When will we look at that? Will we do that before year end then?
Definitely.
Do we, do we know if we're paying diesel charge for that?
Yes.
Fuel and upper?
Yes.
Go further.
Where's the line item that utilities charges us for the billing, that's not that number, right?
No, that's the number.
That is the number from that? So how did, how's that total?
That's probably... Because this is the way the number...
This isn't, this isn't the garbage contract, that's under CHAS. This is from what utility charges us to do our billing, yeah.
Assessment of property professional fees.
We still have that contract with?
So there's no, there's no impact next year?
The, the contract for the, with associate appraiser?
We've always had something in there every year. Fifty-one, fifty-three dash two thirty-four. We budgeted this past year for twenty-three, eight-eighty, and zero going into twenty-six.
Well, we spread it over three years with them, so we could do the re, the re-bail.
So, yeah.
So they, they, they...
Re-bails?
Right, but we're paying for it over the next few years, we didn't pay for it up right up front, we let us pay for it over the...
Yeah, that was yes. So it should be that twenty-three that was in the current budget from last year, the twenty-three, eight-eighty?
I think so, can you print the folder?
Yeah, because we had that, that should be.
Two of us should be.
Okay, we were flat.
Yeah, I know that.
Blue, white, and orange.
Yikes, I'm happy with that until then. Well, appreciate it. I really am hoping that the insurance is go down, liability and that type of thing, because we made some changes. Yeah, so if that may offset, but I don't know that yet. So, and then we have the thirty-five thousand in the contingency in the budget.
There's nothing in our insurance costs as far as that goes for like all the utility upgrades and that kind of stuff, right? That's all separate?
Yeah. It's gotta be, we build up for it. You're talking about the R and R?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be my question.
You upped the fees, like the professional or the, all your fees are going to be in the TIDs?
I was doing that in the TIDs. And then I just kind of matched, just because of the TID two and that type of thing, I increased that. And that was also, those certain things too. Yeah.
It's nineteen thousand for twenty-six.
Yeah, I mean, I can go, you know, certainly go through it again and see if we can, I don't want to cut train budgets, I don't like to do that. Didn't help with the new payment, of course, that added two grand right there.
Well, we took twenty thousand out of the budget last year.
Yes. But I can, try to rework this, of course, but most of the stuff is gonna stay, and we, again, luckily we got a little bit more money from shared revenue.
Well, it's already burnt up, so it doesn't matter any difference.
But a lot of, some, some of the impact is the, you know, the operator's licensure every other year, so right now we're at thirty-one and so we've got a thousand, so... So then we'll go through it again, I talked to...
More building at our best.
Yeah.
I'll work on that.
I don't know where I can cut that. I left the investment interest the same, because I still think it'll be, we're gonna be over a bit this year, so I think we'll be fine, we're gonna work that.
Yeah, what are we selling for twenty-five dollars, sales of interior?
I don't know, it's always been in there, so I keep it in there. I think it's like if, if Chad sells some...
Oh, if it sells for eight cool or something?
Yeah, or like that patch stuff.
Oh, cold patches?
Yeah. Yeah.
The don't you?
Yeah, I think that's some that like you sold to like individuals or something, but...
We want our twenty-five dollars.
Salt, sand?
Something. Yeah, I mean, I can reexamine all this, send it back over to you guys if you want, but I'll try to get down to things if I can.
Unless anybody else sees something that is glaringly out of whack, I don't see anything. Doesn't look like I'm gonna get my new chair next year, so.
No, I think...
Not anymore.
We can look at some cushions, Charlie, we'll start baby's necks.
Let's wear back braces, that's fine.
Fortunately, I managed to help, I missed that.
Any other questions over there?
No, my goal.
Anything else that we should look at along before we move on?
I don't think so, I mean, I, I tried to do all the updates based on that, so mine should be updated. We did get our state aid highway went down, but that was...
I think they...
Over, over stuff, so that was the only thing, which, that's not great, but...
Well, then you're still gonna be looking into all the details on that, just to make sure, maybe the utility said the same thing, that you just gotta make sure that, even though you were doing it, it's in a form, Form C or F or whatever they have.
Yeah, I submit it every year and, but I didn't know that was linked to it, so.
So, well, we'll make sure we capture everything we can.
Yeah, so a little reevaluate, that's why I like big utility.
So...
Yeah, and then we just had really clean up a few things and we have TIDs to go through, and that's pretty simple.
Really pretty simple.
Yeah, so other than that, we're in pretty good shape.
Do we want to make a motion on the budget with that nineteen thousand upper?
Well, they did have requests on their wages, we didn't discuss that at all.
We did?
No, they had the request in there.
It's all at the two percent.
Yeah.
Is there an additional request that I wasn't aware of?
It's on there.
It's just written in there. And what I was talking to her about two, is that we don't have like the bottom line total of everything as it is with what we can spend to stay.
Yeah.
Are we close, are we over, because that's a little gameplay at the end.
The specific line items other than that revisit or that revisit or...
Was this the last one we had anyway?
Besides the TIDs?
Which TIDs are...
And the debt, which I'm working on because of the financing that we have to handle, so that one would be easy as well, yeah.
Oh, well, I see the notes now.
Yes, but we have to.
I didn't see it before today.
Because I was just working on, I was working on everybody else, so sorry, we need to get the bottom total of everything, so we know are we over.
Works, are we over? Is there a smidge of computer aid left that could go towards the road project, so it's less to the fund later?
I think that would be probably...
That might get eaten up because you missed that nineteen thousand already.
Once we finalize these numbers, we'll have a review, who do we have to go for, we probably will be as...
Nope, nope, I'm good.
Did want to do what we should finish up, the end of somewhere, undesignated funds, but cover possibly, but we'll see once the dollar numbers come in.
Yeah, nope, that's fine. I think other than that, one here, everything else is, the revenues are in there. Pretty straightforward, it's the one thing.
So we can motion all line items, wages, and with the addition of that nineteen thousand upper for the assessor? And we can address that in our next meeting?
And I'll, I'll have all the for you on Monday, so you can review that the fire department, the third meeting. Just kind of a scale where we're at, so that we can see based on the ten, ten different numbers for the levy. What kind of, what our idea for, we gotta talk to our, what we can do.
Or we just wait, we'll get over next meeting here?
Yeah.
We'll use a product, or to call session?
Because we're in, we're in a pretty good spot, so.
Okay. Yeah, your name?
Alan.
Approving a portion of it, or should we just forego it until we finalize it?
Approve it as a block.
Okay.
Then piecemeal it.
Alright.
Sounds good.
Can we get a motion to change that one line item for the successor? Can we get a motion to change that one line item for the assessor adding that nineteen thousand, please, noted?
Sure. I'll make a motion to include the nineteen thousand dollar assessor fee in this budget. Whatever that exactly.
I'm happy to give it to somebody else for the budget.
Yeah.
I don't know.
This doesn't matter, all comes out the same.
All the same.
A motion, a second, all those people say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Can I, can you repeat who our motion left, who seconded?
Uh, like Richard, I second it.
Thank you.
Anything else in mind we should look at, otherwise I'll move on to the next thing? Yes. All right. All courteous discussion about this. I will apologize for the lack of transparency, some of this has been discussed since, I would say, June, our June finance meeting. We began talking about insurance and possibly making changes. And we probably didn't do quite a good enough job relating that to the employees, and I apologize for that. A lot of the department heads worked in on those meetings and may or may not have had input at that point, but. Um, I think as a committee here, we're looking at what the best interests of the city and the constituents are gonna be with insurance going forward. It's a very difficult time for a lot of different cities in municipalities such as ours, where growth is limiting our revenue. Everybody wants to have wages, we need to pay for projects, and nobody wants their services cut. So with that said, um, we can go through and try to get a show of hands what the biggest question is. Is it the deductible amounts and how that's gonna be taken, or is it some other issue?
I can start off.
Yep, you can.
I understand the HRA portion of it, we're gonna go to that, we're gonna go to the deductible. Um, my question has to do with the HSA.
And I.
My understanding is, an employee can go anywhere and get an HSA. They're not limited to what the city does or where they go, it's because that's the employees' pay.
It's the employees, yeah.
Right, so they can go to EBC and they fall under, it's more of the flex. Where you invest in it, but then it doesn't go over. So my question is, um, I'm gonna get these acronyms wrong. ETF offers that in our plan. So my recommendation, at least the employees would be, use that one because that one, like all the other ones, it rolls over. You don't lose your money invested, it's yours, it's in their four healthcare. So.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That, that's a, as far as I know, that's individual.
Correct.
Employees' option.
Yes.
Not our decision.
Correct, that's my understanding too.
Yep, that's the way I understand it, so.
That's what I wanted for confirmation, that's what I wanted for confirmation today.
Well, today, I, well, you were in the emails too, that I was communicating back with Joy and Kate. Um, I, the HRA that we're doing, okay, because we have the design, so we, for the rollovers. Due to the IRS restrictions, I'm getting all the documents for, um, for Kate, um, that it's not compatible. It's, IRS has strict guidelines or regulations on the HSA in combination with the HRA. Okay, so they, they've told their advisor said you, they can't do it. And they said, what if they went to ETF, if they did that, and they said, like, you saw my email, so, no. They, they, it doesn't matter, it's, it's an IRS regulation with benefit plans.
So you're stating I can't go to another provider and get a.
Well, I mean, it's an IRS restriction, so in tax time you may run into some problems, but I am still working on that, so I cannot. I, I wanna get you the valid information in front of you, so you can actually see what the IRS code is regarding that. So I can't give you that because I've been researching it and talking to people today on it, but that's what I was told.
Right, but EBC, the problem that the employees have is that doesn't go over.
Right, that's, that's the FSA, that is the, but that is compatible with the HRA.
Through that company.
It doesn't matter with E, and again, I will get you the information, but the HSA and the HRA are not compatible under the, the program that we have. And we have to do the HRA for the, to design it for the rollovers. So that's what I've been told, again, I'm not the IRS, so I'm getting all that information for everyone. And I had said that if the, if HSA was an option, um, I would just be setting it up through EBC. Apparently that is not what a few people had wanted, but I'm not gonna have two different programs, it's, it's tough. But if they can individually do that, then that would be their decision. But again, it's an IRS thing that you could be, have an issue with.
Right.
That's what I told.
And I guess that is tax free, they're gonna put their regulations to make sure it's not being abused, obviously.
Yes, so there is some plan restrictions. Now, if you go and open one up, don't tell them you have an HRA, and then at tax time when you do that, I mean.
Something, they go, we're just asking, I don't understand that part of it, because.
Yes, and I'll, and I'll get you, I, I reached out to them, I just didn't have the time today, time today to get all that done. I did reach out to them, asking for that information for the employees.
I think it'd be great if you could get in a plan where you can roll it over and allow an employee to contribute whatever they want.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I know a lot of people that have an HSA.
Until I found that out, I was gonna set one up with EBC, you know, for people to be able to use, if that was the case, but I was told that that is not. And I'm certainly not gonna set it up to get everybody in trouble either, so.
No, what the question would be is if you can't do it, why wouldn't you set it up with, um, ETF, can they do it?
Because we don't, we don't fall under, that's where local, not state. I think that's where you have to be a state employee, we're not state employees.
We're not required to do anything with them, but they have that option, intentionally. But again, in talking to them, it didn't matter if you did the HSA at ETF, you did at EBC, there's still the restrictions because of the HRA. It doesn't matter, it, it, and if that was the case, and they said, oh yeah, if you go to ETF, I would get that and I would understand it and would move forward. But that's not what I'm being told, so I wanna get confirmation for, for you guys, so to make sure that you know that that's.
So I guess if they're gonna go to party, my suggestion was we should have picked one that it did work with.
It, it's an IRS thing, it wouldn't matter.
Yes.
I'm saying it's not married.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm also understanding that we have spouses that have it, that on it, and they have HRAs that run with the HSAs, that it rolls over.
If we have.
So I know it's out there, I just don't, I don't, I don't know, I'm not an expert on insurance, I worked a lot in the last two weeks. I'm just saying, I guess that's what would be beneficial to the employee, because we know we're gonna have expenses coming down the line, and if you could build up into that, it's your own savings account.
I, I, I absolutely understand that, I'm not, I'm not debating it, it's just I'm, I'm making sure. But the HR we have is.
Yeah, I understand.
Is customized because we have to do it with the max.
That would be our recommendation. That was a concern.
Yeah, I can't give you the answer today, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm.
Well, just a concern.
I told, no, I'm told, no, so I, but I wanna get you the proof.
Okay. Other questions?
So why, why are you limiting the amount you roll over in HRA, and you sit up there and complain there's no money? And the HRA goes directly back to the city. It does not go to the employee when they quit or retire, it goes back into the city's account.
It's not a pay, it's not like wages, it's a benefit.
But you, you keep putting the money in, thirty-four hundred a year.
To cover the deductible.
All into the max.
And if you don't go to the doctor, it rolls and it rolls and it rolls. I quit, you get all my money back. Now you're gonna limit it to whatever you guys decided, that's what you're cut, you don't throw.
Not really, because once you get to the five thousand, we don't have to keep adding to it.
Yeah, we don't add to it anymore.
That's the point.
So, so it's only an upfront pay, so if no one goes to the doctor and uses it.
Yep.
You're only paying them one time, but you said you're gonna pay the deductible every year.
But the next year, but the next year, it would go up, whatever the difference was, to get to the five thousand, whatever the, whatever the number is.
But if I never go to the doctor, and don't use that deductible.
Yep.
I'm not getting paid the next year.
Right, why, why wouldn't we pay that to you?
Cause you gotta pay the next year deductible. I can't, it doesn't roll over, does it?
But.
The full amount.
We, we have to put that money away for whether you use it or not, it doesn't matter, but why would we keep putting more money away for you if you don't use it?
Cause you get it back.
But then we're just, that's a savings account.
You guys get it back.
Then it's a savings account, and that's not what it was set up for, it was set up to cover the deductible, so it wasn't a burden on the employee. So that's the only reason it was set up.
Is it my understanding that the deductible, you cannot pay more than five thousand out of pocket, the way the plan is written?
Yes, that's the max out of pocket limit.
Correct.
So the deductible on the plans, you'll, you, obviously you saw it's like sixteen and.
Seventeen, thirty-four.
Seventeen and thirty-four, that's, that's the deductible for the high deductible thing, the city's paying that.
Right.
That's what the HRA is for.
Yeah.
There's a gap between that and that level of five thousand, the first year, obviously. The people that don't utilize the services will bank that. The next year, they can get to the top level, yes, they're gonna lose some because they're not gonna use the whole thirty-four hundred or whatever. But you have to also remember your liability is even smaller, because your monthly portions that you pay for health insurance, now because of the high deductible, are almost a hundred dollars a month less. So you're pocketing more money on a monthly basis, because we go up, went to this insurance point. So yes, there's gonna be some liability on your end, the match is gonna be maybe four hundred dollars for a family plan that's gonna come out of your pocket. But we can't do apples to apples and expect a cheaper premium. That's not what we're trying to do, we're trying to make it cheaper for everyone to free up money, so we can utilize it to pay other things like wages. This is a, just one tool, we've looked at it two years ago to try to save money, and it was a totally different plan. This is not that much different. There's, there's preventive health, everything you go for, your checkups, uh, for your yearly, annual stuff is all a hundred percent paid. It doesn't even count to that. And this deductible portion, like I said, the deductible that we're already paying for you, goes to that total out of pocket limit.
But according to.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I mean.
What about the ETF website says on the tier one, and the lowest one, you're saying, the high deductible. Once that deductible is met, then the person is on for ten percent.
Ten percent.
No, do you have anything in your mind?
Yeah, it does.
It's up to the limit, the maximum out of pocket.
Yeah, it's up to the limit.
Once that out of, the deductible is met, it's ten percent.
Up to the five thousand.
Then it's ten, then it's ten percent until you meet the five thousand if you're on a family plan.
That's what I'm wanting.
No, and that's where we need to talk about wages or other benefits, cause I think a lot of us came here not for the money, but for the benefits. And so it's hard when the benefits, I, I mean, and I realize you're in a tough position, but, but that's, we, we did not come here for money. When I came here, I did not come here because I was gonna make more money, I actually made less money than I made at my last job. But I came here because I'm retiring, and, and, you know, we don't even get vacation for the first year. I mean, that's unheard of in the world, I mean, people laugh at us. So, I mean, our benefits are, are not getting any better, we're taking, it feels like we're taking the brunt of it. We're taking the brunt of it, as employees.
So, so you have a single, do you have a single family? Single or family?
Family.
So you have a family. So you're gonna, the city's gonna, you're gonna go to high deductible, you're gonna pay less every month.
I'm paying more, I'll be paying more, I guess that's my choice, but I will be paying more.
Because of the poli, because of the policy you chose of this?
But mine will be going up with the high deductible, plus then I will have the ten percent on it. I know, it's on me.
Yeah, and I can't control that, I mean, those are personal choices, that we can't think of every option.
I know, but it's hard when you can say, we're, we're doing this because we're trying to help you with wages, but you're gonna get two percent, and now you gotta pay sixteen hundred dollars probably, and you're gonna pay more, I'm gonna pay more, my choice, my choice. But it, it's hard when you don't feel any upside, it's really hard for everybody in this room, I mean, I don't mean to speak for them, but it's hard to see that. And we wanna be here, we're here because we wanna be here, and that's the people you wanna keep.
Okay, well, I think the decision on our part was when we saw the eleven percent raise in, in premiums. We thought it was a, a good time to, to make a change.
But that eleven percent premium also impacts us.
If we were to stay the same, it would have been eleven percent upper for the city and for the employees.
But that's it, you know that number, that number is there. You don't know if you're gonna get hurt or if you're gonna have it, so it's, it's easier for me to say, I'm gonna have to pay a hundred dollars more paycheck, but I don't have it out of pocket, so I'm, I'm much more comfortable. I can, I can budget for that.
Okay.
With my two percent raise.
If you had a two percent raise.
Yes, I did.
It all comes out of the same pot, Jimmy. So if we, if we pay more for the.
But I'm not giving either, I'm giving two percent, which I, is a given, we're getting two percent.
I'm, I'm still, the, the city's liability is still, instead of here, it's here. It's more. How much we pay more as a city for health coverage, because we want to stay in the same plan, where does that money come from?
I, I don't know, but it's not coming from our raises.
This is what we have to decide, we can't just say, I don't know, we have to figure it out.
Right, but, but it's, I'm just saying, you have to hear what we're seeing as employees, that there, there's always downside, we came here not for the money, I did a hundred percent. It was benefits, and then the benefits go away, and then you want employees to keep coming in, and, and it's a great team, it's great people.
And replacing them isn't gonna be easy, because it can go anywhere else.
They can, they can.
For way more.
Yep, understood that.
Do we group, when you're looking for insurance rate, do you group to get a better rate, or do you go just Jefferson County only? Cause you can group, and you can get a better rate.
Our tier is based on the county that was, that we're located, Jefferson.
But you can group and get a better rate, you can go partner with Dane County, you can partner with Dodge, you can partner with Columbia and get a better rate.
Can now.
That I'm not.
How do we not, how do we not know, how do we not know this, until now, that you can't group?
I've never heard the grouping at all, now, I can provide you with Dane County positions, but our tier one, eighty-eight percent is for Jefferson.
But you can group to get a better rate.
Well, that's never been, never heard that.
Do you think of all the consultants that we've gone through and talked, that someone would have mentioned that?
Yeah, cause you can group.
I, I would certainly look into it.
So I was asked to bring the question up, ask if they grouping, cause it gets them a better rate.
How much better?
Not for me to figure out. And my next question is.
You're bringing it up, so.
How do you plan on replacing people that leave, when the first thing they look at, as a new employer, looking at the city, is the benefit package, and you've cut it? How is that appealing?
How we're cutting it, that's confusing to me.
That's confusing to me too, as you say, we're cutting it.
You're lowering us from a tier one to a tier four, which is gonna cost us more money in the long run.
How are we doing that?
And here's what's gonna wind, I can see wind up happening, I know what's gonna happen, the city is gonna say, well, pay your deductible, and then after the first year, they're like, well, we can't afford that anymore, now it's on you.
No, don't, don't.
I can a hundred percent see that happening.
No.
We're not, we're not, we're not doing what ifs.
You've already mentioned, Charles, you already mentioned that it could happen.
We're not doing what ifs.
If different council people are here, maybe.
Yeah.
And different council people could be here in one year, two year, three years, and they can change everything.
Right.
So the next question is, how much is this new little tier gonna supposedly say? So the next question is, how much is this new little tier gonna supposedly save?
Well, that's what I'm confused about, why are we suddenly switching tiers? What is that?
Wait, I, I don't switch.
The tiers, what do you have, you have four different tiers?
It's just a different program. Hang on, hang on. I asked Lana the question, so just don't all talk at once. You just said we're switching to a tier four, I, that's a good point.
I don't, I, I've never heard of, there, there's different tiers that the insurance is, is different companies, but our premiums are based off what they delegate as the tier one. And all we have chose is a different program within that whole realm of P, we're at P seven, you know, and we were P two or whatever, but that doesn't, that's a program.
I guess I apologize, I misunderstood earlier. So the low, lowest possible thing in tier one we can get is what we're going to.
There's four insurance is offered in tier one of the state. We are at number one, so you're gonna take us from the top all the way down to the bottom.
How are we doing that?
There's four options you can take in a tier one. Traditional is one we have, that's the top one.
Okay.
And there's two more steps you can take, and then there's the high deductible is the fourth op-, the lowest option. That's what I refer to. You're in a tier one, but they offer four different,
Levels.
Levels.
Okay.
And this is the bottom level.
But we're not reducing your insurance, that, that's the way I, that's what I heard you say, like, we're, like, we're giving you an inferior insurance. The insurance shouldn't be changing, it's just we're changing how we're paying for it. Instead of a hundred percent upfront, we're doing a deductible. That's all we're changing.
Yeah.
Paying for the deductible.
I mean, we didn't have a coinsurance before, that's new.
But that's what we're putting in the money for.
No, you're not putting up a coinsurance, no.
How, how long is the coinsure?
You're paying at thirty-four hundred. We can be paying up to five grand, so we're doing coinsurance once we hit the thirty-four hundred. So we are on the line for sixteen hundred dollars, we weren't in the past.
Yeah.
That's different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That math is correct.
Should have been lowered roughly a hundred dollars on top of it.
Majority of the people were supposed to be saving. I mean, that was the whole point, is we were saving more employees as well.
You guys save on this, we don't.
I've never seen that, I've never seen that one.
Most, most of the programs have gone to zero out-of-pocket, unfortunately, like you're saying, the dean. And I get why you would wanna change, I, I mean, I do understand that. That one went up, and we went up a lot more.
Everybody still has the sixteen hundred dollars in coinsurance, everybody.
No, I'm not, yeah, I'm not debating that far.
Yeah, but that's what I was debating.
Yeah, okay. A lot of them went down, that they, you don't,
But it's already been approved, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We had to make a decision by,
Yesterday.
Yesterday.
That sucks.
So let me get this straight, you guys went through four months of proof debt in the city, and not, employees and nothing about it?
We had all these open meetings, nothing was ever proper.
This, this, this is new, this is all new.
No.
How's this new?
Well, coinsurance, I did not know anything about till last week. This is all new, absolutely one hundred percent.
There's no, there's no, there's no, imagine a lot of pocket.
We thought it was a deductible, that's it.
I mean, I'm not one of the officers, but how does this work with the whole contract?
Let me see.
It's within tier one, so.
Oh.
My next question is, if, if we're trying to save money at the city.
So this was approved yesterday?
Well, we're not, it's not so much that we're trying to save money for the city, it was, we're trying to save money to give more money.
It's a hundred percent trying to save money for the city, otherwise you wouldn't be looking at it. Whether, because you're not gonna give it back in wages.
Yeah.
You say you will, but it's not gonna happen. Otherwise, we're gonna have to fight for it in order to get it. The other, my other question is, for saving purposes, you still have the incentive program to not take insurance, correct?
Correct.
Talking twelve and fourteen thousand dollars. How many people are on that?
I don't remember the number.
Eleven.
Yeah.
Eleven, that's a hundred fifty-six thousand dollars.
Yep.
You wanna save money and give it back to, give it back to wages? Get rid of that.
Well, you're gonna make a lot of people do that.
I'd rather give, I'm on that. I'd a hundred percent give that up and leave our insurance alone.
Well, that's something you all can decide on, if you're all in agreement of that.
Well, decisions are made before we can,
We're not gonna make that decision this year anymore.
Yeah, it's done.
Yeah.
I don't even know why we're here.
Sounds like you just made the decision for us, and you're punishing the people who take the insurance, rewarding the ones who don't.
Unfortunately, we had to make a decision for the city.
Well, in the future, as long as I'm still here, I don't know what it takes to get, like, an email from the city council of, hey, we're gonna be discuss, I, I honestly, I don't know, this is my first one. But, it, like you said, it just really sucks that this was decided yesterday, and open enrollment started yesterday, right?
Starts Monday.
Monday.
On Monday.
Or, the fir-, yeah.
The first.
She needed to get it into making KF by the first.
Good. You know, next year, I mean, when those programs come out again, and they see the premiums, and if it changes, it, it, we, we're not tied into that we have to stay, I mean, next year, it may be feasible with the, the money that they're putting in the HRA and all those things to go back to that or a, a different level of that with deductibles or something. I mean, uh, the programs come out earlier now, which is very good, I mean, it's great, so we know. Um, but it doesn't mean this is a lifetime either. I mean, you, you have to know that we're gonna look, but there's a,
The budget is, the budget's like genuine every year. We, we have to make assumptions that isn't happy for anybody, that seems like we can never make everybody happy, so.
Right, but I just think, I'm,
Communication would probably,
I just think, like you said earlier, develop this, what, if this would come out in a memo form and explain this to months, it would take a lot of anxiety that department heads could get this down to the employees and, and understand that, you know, I didn't, even a week ago, I didn't understand the HSA and HRAs, and I think that would really be done.
I don't think we had all that information two months ago.
Was that?
I don't think we had all the information,
You did.
to make a memo, to give to you guys.
You did.
You still don't have it.
You didn't have it, I didn't have it.
Well, we do on the HRA, I mean, that, that is, I, we have that. The question is, the HSA.
I guess my question, still don't have the numbers on how it really is actually gonna work out, and open enrollment starts Monday. Are we prepared to lose half of our, I mean, unless I'm not understanding all the language very well.
Yeah, what numbers, are you interested in finding?
For the insurance purposes overall. Like, what it's actually going to save the city supposedly to give back to us, supposedly. Um, and, again, why, four months ago in June, when this conversation started, why weren't the city employees notified?
We've had meetings publicly this whole time on everybody's agenda.
But it's not passed on to the city employees.
Opt out, we were talking everything, or we talked out for weeks.
Correct, correct. Anytime there's a meeting, city heads show up, cause that's who's supposed to be here, city heads.
Okay, this is a public meeting, everybody,
How is this information put out?
In the agendas?
Where's the agenda?
No, it says general.
September, September third, right?
What's that?
Lana got an email, so September third for an open records request. There were two items on that agenda.
I got it.
Police budget, DPW budget, that was it.
Okay.
To find out, you were in here till nine-thirty, having a discussion, and then froze it, free, uh, opt-out, wasn't even on the agenda. How are we supposed to come to a meeting when it's police and DPW only?
I thought it said general discussion.
You can't go back up, once you're on the bottom.
We didn't decide until eighteen.
Not, not according to my boss, the next morning. And I filed an open records request, and it was forwarded to Lana, and the recorder wasn't turned on that night, supposedly.
I, I didn't get any, I asked, I asked, we talked about it.
And no, they didn't.
I, I, I didn't, I asked, I didn't.
So how, so, okay, so how are you gonna defend yourself? When, when you guys say, come to the meeting, but what's on the agenda is not what's being discussed, when it should have been an adjournment after the PD budget was discussed?
Can't speak to it.
So was there a special meeting last night that decided this?
No, no, it was decided on the eighteenth of September, at a finance committee meeting, and there was department heads in,
That's the one that went till nine-thirty at night.
No, that was, that was September third.
Eighteenth meeting, department heads were present.
We didn't know the whole thing though, no one talked about a coinsurance or anything. We talked about the, just the, the, we're finding it.
Cause we didn't have that information. We didn't have that information.
I know, but you can't, how do you approve it when you don't have the information? So we didn't have the information, and neither.
We did.
So the question was answered.
I can't roll a bad gene, it happened.
That's not, I'm, that's not what I'm saying, Charlie, I'm just saying, we, I, the way I found out was last week, Dennis brought me in a slip, and we were looking at it, he's like, there, this goes up to five thousand, that, all we ever talked about was thirty-four hundred, or thirty-two, or thirty-one, the whole time. There was no talk of anything else, so it's not fair to the employees for not being told about it. I really should have deadlines, but you still should be,
We're almost out of time here, and I, I did all your, I mean,
Isn't the number,
Firstly, I wish I had your insurance, cause I pay eighty, twenty, and my out-of-pocket's over twelve grand.
That's not fair.
It's not fair, I know, it's not fair to me either, but I'm a taxpayer.
Do you make what we make here?
I'm a taxpayer as well.
Do you get bonuses? We don't. It's not the same thing, it's not apples to apples.
You're not looking at the picture.
Sorry, but it's not.
And I, and I think on the bottom of that fact, the numbers were updated fe-, uh, September third, so to say you didn't have the numbers, I don't think is an accurate statement.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Hold a second, hold the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're adjourned.
We have another meeting at six-thirty.
Austin Cool here.
Wade here. We have a forum in all in attendance. Approval meeting minutes from Sep-, from September fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Austin Cool, make a motion to approve meeting minutes from September fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Pass it a second.
I have a motion and second to approve the meeting minutes of September fourth, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same motion carries. Citizen input and public comment, three minutes, um, for anything that's not on the agenda. Seeing none, hearing none? Project oversights and updates?
Project oversights and updates, um, the project is, overlay, middle overlay project is roughly ninety-nine percent completed, and all they have to do is remove their type three barricades and their traffic barrels. The Blum and Henry Street sidewalk connecting the project, it's like ninety-five percent complete. Um, Cartesner has to come back and wedge in some driveways and brown some curb approaches.
Can you remember, what'd you say, the first ninety-nine, was that Indian Hills?
Indian Hills.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
That's all great surfaces on.
Looks really nice.
Yeah. All of them are gonna have a nice, smooth street to follow there. Um, Hendrick Street is moving along pretty well, they brought in a second crew. Um, We'll be finishing up underground this week. Um, Town and Country will be coming in and starting the second road base. The intersection at East Madison Street and Henry Street will unfortunately stay closed for another weekend.
Oh, is it still closed? Okay.
Cartesner is supposed to be in on Monday to do the grading, Tuesday paving, and once it's cooled down, they'll open that up. And then that'll be it for closures on nineteen, they will not go back on time. Kinda sucks for residents, I didn't want this at all. I had different options, I gave to the DOT, they didn't like my options, they gave me an option that was rude, I said, that won't work, it won't give us anywhere on there, so. It sucks, but nothing to do about it.
No sewer connections and water connections take time.
Yeah, and the problem, you know, the sewer's always, all the way on the south side of the street, so they couldn't put one lane, they had to chop the whole of it.
Yeah, you wouldn't want one lane next to that big of a hole anyway.
No, but they couldn't find,
And then all services that went through that, too, so.
Yeah, there was water service.
Even though with all that truck traffic with the paving the other way, you'd have shaken that all in anyway.
They're beating up Pier Street. I mean, might be a project we're gonna look at sooner than later, but.
Yeah, not a surprise.
Huh?
Not a surprise, the DOT wasn't paving, probably, that all right.
We, yeah, the truck traffic, if they weren't paving on ninety-four, would be a lot less.
Right, yep, understood.
They're on blacktop lines out of Waterloo, Michael's pit.
No, it's just poor timing.
Um, Mayor, do you want us to speak on, to start the logging conversation?
In the future agenda items and announcements.
Okay, alright, so, that's all I got, and we should probably be on track to finish up for this kind of,
Yeah, we got time yet for paving?
Yeah, usually they can stop paving or do it Friday before Thanksgiving, so, yeah, Thanksgiving, yeah, Thanksgiving the week late this year.
How's the entrance into three-three-three, did that whole issue get resolved, or that, when something wasn't settling right?
Oh, yeah, that, where they, where they had to set the manhole for the earthless hyphen was inferior soil, they dug it out, they dumped in a bunch of loads of twelve-inch breaker, since it's worth a little, seems to be holding this night going worse.
Okay, so that's all under control then?
Yeah.
And they're, did they, have they leveled that block yet?
No, still looks like a bottom runoff down there.
Okay, alright.
So I think this, like, oh, no, we got homework finished. The town of Portland and the city of Waterloo will be joining together to do some ditch work on Clarkson Road in the vicinity of Blum and Clarkson, and some culvert and ditch work in the vicinity of Hickory in Clarkson.
So do you,
And I got that in my, what?
Go ahead, finish.
I have that money in my budget, it's like thirty-five hundred bucks.
Do you put that out as a DPW post, or the city hall put that out, so that people know what's happening?
Sarah and Jean got more followers than I got, so I'll let them post it, and then I'll share it.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, sounds good.
I only have like two hundred followers on DPW videos.
You gotta up your content game.
Yeah, I gotta boost my, boost my content.
When does that work start?
Tentatively Wednesday after school traffic. We will have some flaggers out there.
See, did some patching on that road too.
Uh, Scott's construction came in and overlaid some of the sticky thoughts that they had and then rechecked field areas. I don't think it's gonna work, but. I blew with sale nine, just kind of talk of, yeah, with the town of Portland, I told their seller, they're gonna have to start over and. He didn't take that.
Probably not. Guess we'll see. Must have a warranty.
That was the warranty. That's all I got, you think?
Alright. New business. On-call hours for DPW employees.
So I'm trying to send you guys something late, although example that I acquired from Barry.
Give me one. Oh, she might have given them up.
Yeah.
This is out, should be copied. I, I had it printed off the, the website or excuse me, the, the handbook. So it's a matter of having a discussion of how we want this to work and how you want it to read. The entire handbook has to give some updates, including making sure that we actually have it recorded. So when we make updates, it's gotta have a revision. It's gotta have a date so that they're not fully, you know, you know, kinda, kinda some common sense things we're missing. So, so I gave you some options. You talked it with the guys, so tell me what you wanna do.
Well, the handbook states four hours paid regular time each day you're on call and then holidays. Handbook also states that we're only on call. I guess the new updated version says from Labor Day and more of the head. I don't feel like that's feasible. I mean. One of these days, you know, we all have young patients except for Travis. I mean, I can't expect these guys to sit around. And not get compensated for it. So. I guess I wanna come up. With a solution to have a coverage, on weekend coverage, all year round. And I guess Chris correct him wrong. Eight hour weekend is what we're talking about, correct?
Eight hours of overtime?
Eight hours of.
Time, yeah.
Time and a half is what they talked about. When I presented the budget, I presented you guys eight hours at straight time with the handbook.
Right.
With a what?
Straight time.
The eight hours a weekend, straight time, the way the handbook reads.
With the way the handbook reads. I didn't understand that last sentence.
Yeah, so. I guess. Four hours, if you already read the handbook, four hours, time and a half on weekends. Weekend starts. Last scheduled workday, maybe. So whether it's Saturday or it's Thursday or Friday. You can pay eight hours for a weekend at time and a half.
Even if you're not called in?
If you had called in the way the handbook reads, you'd be compensated two hours of call and pay. And that would come out, sorry, that'd be coming out of overtime.
But then you, you wouldn't necessarily then forego the on-call pay either?
No, that's the way it worked out years past is.
Well, I'm just explaining.
Yep.
So, so the real cost to us, which you don't really have right now.
No, not exactly.
I mean, we'd have to look at what the highest, highest wage earner, eight hours, time and a half, times fifty-two? Does that seem right? Yup. As a.
Thirteen thousand five hundred eleven dollars sixty.
I think you had about twelve thousand in the budget.
Eleven twelve, yeah.
And so not, not significantly more. And you have, well, you must have adequate overtime pay budget.
Yeah.
Because you're already paying that when they come in, so.
And not all of this is gonna come out as per se. So they, you know, they, they can change it from their eight hours. Eight hours of time and a half, they can convert it and come, take it as PTO also. So there's a different variable there too.
Well, I guess for discussion's sake. I think we do need to polish this up and figure it out.
Yes.
And make it right. Um, but I don't know that we'll be able to do all of that here tonight.
I reached out or had Jean reach out on our clerks list and what do we give Jean, like twelve different responses and. There wasn't really nothing good there either, so.
Nothing good or just all over the map?
All over the place. Some people didn't get paid. Some people got paid per day and some companies or municipalities did it weekly, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Just kinda wanna stay with like the handbook reads since, you know, weekends and holidays.
Outside of the. Labor day, more, more of the Labor Day criteria, you wanna.
I wanna do.
Do it in all year, you know, calendar. I, I don't disagree with that.
Not that it's a big deal, but you know, I like to take a vacation in January or in February, you know, and then one week, you know, it's gone, but. I expect these guys to be here, you know, I'm all.
Yeah.
You know.
I, I think the on-call pay would be probably limited to one person.
Correct.
Is that a, that's a question?
Only be a rotation of three or four of us.
No.
But one at a time.
Oh, one at a time.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's your question.
No, that's fine. I'm just trying to understand the, the cost.
Yeah.
My little here, but.
If you fit two weeks, one person on call.
Right.
At their time and a half.
And if two get called in, that's overtime, so that doesn't matter.
That's a totally different story.
That's a different bucket.
We had a winter storm or spring storm or whatever, a roof one flying off. Chris was on vacation. I called the other guys in, you know, it was all overtime.
Right, so that doesn't, that doesn't impact the budget?
No, that's, that's a whole different line.
So the only impact is the thirteen, whatever that number is.
Correct.
And that, you'd probably use the highest wage earner so that it doesn't matter who's on.
Yeah, I mean, I could.
For a budget number.
Yeah, and I could dial it down. I could do thirteen weeks. I could do thirteen weeks in my week. Chris is late, Travis is late.
We don't need to get into that deep. That way if you guys rotate or change or trade, it doesn't matter.
You're getting the maximum potential amount.
The maximum, maximum risk, max, maximum liability, yeah.
But you're suggesting eight hours and double time?
Time and a half.
Time and a half.
Versus four hours of straight time like the handbook says.
It's, it's the same essentially. If you read the handbook, it's four hours straight pay.
Right.
So you're paying me Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that's twelve hours. Or you're paying me eight hours, four hours Saturday, four hours, four hours Sunday at time and a half, I still get my twelve.
So if it's four, but why are we paying him on a Friday when Friday's a work?
Cause that's what your handbook states.
Hand, handbook needs to get updated and.
Handbook states any day you are put on call, you are compensated.
Okay, but why are we putting him on call on a Friday that's a work week?
Not on our four tens, it's not.
Okay, so then that might be another conversation we have to have.
I don't think.
I'm just, I don't really know what the handbook states.
I'm just trying to have everything out there because now you're making it time and a half and it's eight hours and now it's three days.
But time and a, time at twelve equals time and a half at eight.
Yup.
That's net zero.
Say that one more time?
If you take twelve hours times your wage, straight time, so it's, call it twenty bucks.
Okay.
So take twelve times, times twenty.
Okay.
And then you take twenty, thirty times eight, take thirty times eight, it's the same answer.
Correct. I can't work it to thirty times eight.
That's time and a half.
Guys, time more.
Yeah. If you're using twenty dollars, just for math.
Just a number, right?
Simple.
Right, so it should be the same money.
Yup, it's literally a wash.
It's a wash.
Yup.
So if you're not requesting four hours for Friday, you're just requesting Saturday, I don't even care. Friday or Saturday, Saturday or Sunday, I don't even care.
Still compensated.
It doesn't even matter, right? So if they're just asking for eight, that's equal to twelve at time. Handbook modifications to put it that way, which we can't do tonight. We'll work on that.
So I guess ignore this Sarah, we can tie something up to implement in here to come to that next week.
Yeah, yeah. And. Yeah, I don't think we can implement this yet, this budget cycle, cause it's not in the budget.
No, no, but you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to make your update to your book by January first, or you're gonna have to revert back to the book.
One hundred percent, and that's, that's our goal.
Yeah, I'd just say, I'm just playing it out.
Right now is just a very poor time to.
No, I agree. I, I still am.
To be add a bunch of stuff, but it's all notes and it's all stuff that we do. We haven't listened this long for the handbook. It's pretty ridiculous, but. So I'll look for a motion. To send to finance. This re- reinstating the on-call pay. Cause that was taken away at, at one point.
Yeah, it was a budget cut years ago.
Before I was on call.
Yeah, before.
And that's what I couldn't find is I'd learn the hell out of the road, so just taking it out, putting it back in.
And that could have been the department had with, talking with the former clerk or I don't know if you just got taken out of the budget. I was not charged either at all.
Yeah.
None of us were here for that.
But that, that's all part of the reason why I wanna make sure when we're doing these updates that there's resolutions and numbers and dates.
Absolutely.
Cause I don't know when this ever changes either. I have a little second.
Oh, I didn't even make a motion. I was looking for, I was looking for.
I don't, I don't make that motion. Yeah, we got, um, send it to, to finance.
Okay.
And I'll have, we'll start working on some.
Yeah, you and staff can put together the language.
Yup. Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Typical red line.
With math?
Yeah, I think priorities that next meeting, we can hopefully approve this. I think four weeks should be sufficient time.
So it's going to finance or it's coming back here? I'm trying to understand. Oh, yeah.
Well, it would go to finance first, because finance will meet before we meet again.
Okay, so finance then back to you? You guys want it to come back to you?
I don't even, I don't, I don't think we need to see it.
No, I don't think we need to see it.
I think we dash. I think everybody's good with adjustments that were made.
And we can, so, we can edit it at finance and edit the council to.
But do you have a recommendation to match what he just said?
Yup, I have a motion.
Okay, that's all I wanted to hear.
Right, I do. Well, we haven't voted yet, so we can amend our motion.
I just wanted to make sure what, just like Jean was trying to write it down, just making sure we understand what the motion is. So we're changing the handbook.
So we're gonna prepare and edit to the handbook.
Yep.
To reinstate on-call pay at eight hours a weekend at the overtime rate, time and a half rate.
At eight hours a weekend?
At, at time and a half rate.
Fifty-two weeks.
For fifty-two weeks?
Yup, yup, and extend it year.
Okay.
Instead of just.
Thank you, that was the other thing.
Instead of just the summer, you're right. So. I'll repeat the motion. I have a motion from Austin Cool to reinstate. On-call pay at eight hours a weekend at time and a half pay and change the dates in the handbook to be all year instead of over the summer.
Correct.
That's why I never understood it on the, why was that straight time rate?
I, I don't know, cause the one handbook says it's your own and.
Yeah, it's.
I point my finger and tell Travis you're on call, Chris you're on call.
I, honestly, it's.
I'll be around, you know.
It's irrelevant. We're going forward.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's a requirement to take the on-call?
Is it mandatory?
Is it mandatory that they, that.
Take an on-call?
Take call?
Why wouldn't they?
They, I'm just saying, if they don't have to, why would they?
Do we put that word in? Is that what you're trying to say?
Do we need to include mandatory?
Asking the question.
On-call pay.
Right.
Just cause you put the payout there doesn't necessarily mean that someone's gonna sign up, staying with the fire department.
And employees shall be on standby slash emergency status if the employee is instructed verbally or by, in writing by his or her supervisor continuously be available to support work during off-duty period.
Where's that from?
Is that written?
Six dash five, section eight.
So the city handbook?
Yes.
So the department has the one that's divvying out when they're on call.
Well, I think, I think what would happen is a calendar would be made and they would sign up for the weekends and then Chad would fill in with. Who's should be in rotation maybe?
Or be rotation, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but you could also trade.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
If that's in your own court, we're not gonna mandate that.
What's, I, I guess I didn't see that policy, I guess in real close. What's your response time? Cause I think a half hour is a little bit ridiculous. I think it needs to go to an hour. Once, don't you, once you receive your phone call, you have an hour to report? What's your till? Hmm?
It did say thirty.
Thirty minutes for the until day, I don't know where to check it.
But no longer than thirty minutes.
Is travel time issue or just what's your concern?
Well, so I'm on call when I'm stuck to my house, right? Theoretically, I'm.
Or within thirty minutes of the city, yeah. Thirty minutes with the city.
Correct, but I can't leave Columbus. I could, I could go to forever maybe, but I'm stuck. Correct.
I think that's the point where you're getting paid for on-call.
I mean, I don't like, in Milton, we got thirty minute response time too. I don't like an hour, but I could work that much. I could go forty-five. I would, I would be amenable to that, that. Part of the problem is what's the emergency and how bad, how bad does the help need to get there? How quick?
And I think if someone's on call and they're pushing the forty-five minute mark, they can call the other person and say, hey, go take this for me. They need someone in there right away.
Well, if you, if you're just on call and you can call one of your coworkers and, hey, you wanna cover this call in, and they can get the overtime. I don't think, I don't think that matters to me. It's not my business. So long as someone takes the hours.
I think we can handle it entirely.
Yeah, I don't wanna write all that down.
No.
I mean.
Just looking for clarification.
No, understood. I wanna give all the clarification I can get.
If it's an emergency, forty-five minutes could be awful compared to thirty minutes.
It depends what the emergency is.
But now, put it on the flip side, right? Say it's a blizzard and I'm on call and I gotta come down eighty-nine. I ain't making the half hour. I'm not, probably not gonna make the forty-five minute.
Drop the plow and you're probably.
I mean, they're taking the truck home.
I don't think you're gonna be a real stickler for that. You're gonna do like situation by situation.
In, in the winter time, winter time, odds are I'm gonna look at, look at the schedule or look at the radar and be like, okay, you know, we're working, all four of us are working Saturday from two AM until time is.
I think this is just basically saying, if you're the one that's on call, don't go to the dels. Don't go to Milwaukee. You know, if it, especially if it's just a certain timeframe on top of it.
Yup.
Doesn't mean at six o'clock you can't take off or whatever it takes maybe.
Well, I tell you what, I think we, you, why don't you guys edit it up? What you wanna see and we'll approve it or not.
We, we can write it, we can talk about it, type it up and I'll send it out to three, via email.
But you can't.
But we can't respond by it. We can't.
No, I was just gonna say that. You can't all respond in the same email. I'll, I'll send three different ones out and you can correspond with me.
You can send in a group, that's fine. We just can't respond all. We can't reply all.
But don't you just want that to come back here then or?
Yeah, we do. We do.
Yeah, I think.
But we could also say, yeah, that's not what we meant, if, if they don't get it written up well enough.
To work out the details is one thing, to work out the budget numbers is something else.
The budget number is pretty much in there.
You have, you have something listed in there, but I don't know Chad if that's exactly what you want.
No, you guys.
He was a little short, so he's gonna have to increase that by two thousand bucks late.
You guys cut it half on me, but I'll look at it tomorrow.
Look at it, get it to Lana so that she can get it entered, okay?
I'm pretty sure I'll look at it.
Yeah, I do.
Cause she had made, made some changes and stuff.
I've seen far too many numbers to, to, to say yes or no.
Just make sure she sees it and then I'll come to finance.
Yup.
Okay.
Alright, so I have a motion in the second to modify the handbook for on-call hours. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the same? Motion.
Uh, is it going to finance then or it's coming back to you guys? Cause the first motion.
It's going to finance first because we gotta deal with the budget part of it. So we gotta deal with the money part of it.
But then it want, you want it back to public works?
Back to public works afterwards.
Got it, thank you.
To finish the details, and only because finance is first.
I got two minutes, hurry. Got it.
Alright.
Future items and announcements.
Yup, future items, agenda items and announcements.
That's eight. Alright, Chad and I got two things. So I'm just letting you guys know, I attended the Elbert meeting on Tuesday, the city of. That's eight, all right, Chad, I got two things, so I'm just letting you guys know, um, I attended the ELRIP meeting on Tuesday, the city of Waterloo is getting nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, that we can put that toward North Van Buren Street, that is called entitlement, and it is basically mandatory spending, user rules a kind of thing. The next thing then, that I will be putting through, is working out discretionary and supplemental grants for South Van Buren Street.
Okay.
Number twenty-two seven, and that can be anywhere from a fifty percent grant up to a ninety percent grant. So that is good, cause originally we were talking about at, with Mitch, that maybe we'll, we'll go up for a grant for North Monroe, and don't worry about it, but it's such a minor thing, that it, for, for us to come up with a hundred fifty thousand to fix that road.
North Van Buren?
I'm sorry, North Van Buren, cause it's just mill and overlap, we want these things, cause that's what they look at, is the big. We talked cherry trees.
So, yeah, so we have, we own a track of land behind the Indian Hills subdivision, it's all full of old growth, uh, cherry trees, oak trees, and we brought up years ago, and possibly log that off, Chris and I took a tour the other day, if there is still a number of old growth cherry, and old stuff down there, I'm just wondering if we wanna pursue that, or just leave the tree stand, I can call some other companies, see what they say, or.
I think it merits investigation.
Okay.
Have an arborist come out and assess the value.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Or potential value.
Yeah, and, and both, I looked up weekly logging company, they're, uh, well, someplace up north, and, uh, Alson Logging Company on Monroe, neither one of them said they give free quotes, so I'm gonna have to give a couple whole calls and do it, look up. Both of them said they pay for our wood and type this stuff, so.
Okay.
So I'll look into that.
Sounds good.
Money, yeah.
Awesome. Oh.
Council meeting order?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, come on, Cummings here.
Austin Cool here.
Austin Cool here.
Griffin here.
Thomas here.
Where are you?
House line here.
Game doll here, uh, minutes approval of September eighteenth. Any corrections? Cummings will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Griffin, a second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Griffin, to approve the meeting minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
All of same.
Okay, motion carried, uh, citizen input. All right, meeting minutes summary, since the last council meeting, uh, we got a bunch on here, one of them was missing, it just is the ten to finance, which is from tonight, and it is below, just noting that we have two things for finance, Charlie.
Um, basically, we discussed budget items in most, all of the instances above, and the thing that was on regarding the squad car is below in this agenda.
All right, thank you, uh, planning commission, that was me, that too has, um, several of those items below, and I will talk about that then, uh, library?
Yep, we discussed the twenty-twenty-six budget, um, a couple of the policies, and, yeah, it was a lot of around the, um, the budget, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, public health and safety.
Oh, that's me, that's me again.
Oh, that is. I'm just looking at you for that.
Here we go, here we go, what you got? Just joking, um, yes, so we discussed the massage parlor ordinance, um, we are putting together and will have revised for our next meeting.
Okay.
Um, to bring to council, and then the recreational vehicles ordinance, uh, we denied that, uh, request to have it changed, um, with the utility vehicle, um, and then for future agenda items, we are going to put back on, to discuss the ordinance, um, that pertains to junk and storage.
Okay.
To review it, so that was pretty much what we discussed.
Yeah, that was a kind of lengthy one.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Public works, Richard?
We discussed changing the handbook for the on-call pay for DPW, which will be coming to finance and council at a later date.
Great, thank you. All right, new business, we are, um, seeing. New parks commission member, but we have it below as a resolution. So we'll talk about it then. All right, recommendations of boards committees and commissions, planning commission, that is me, all right, so this remnant land, I think we've talked about this for ten or.
Yeah, over, over fif- over fifteen.
Fifteen years, all right, so, you know, things sometimes don't move as fast as we would like, but we got it, so the first one is resolution twenty-five thirty-nine, and Tim very nicely found this document, that back in the day, that was actually your land to begin with, or that property's land.
It would have been that property's land.
And then for some reason, I don't know, the road got changed, I don't know what the deal was, but then all of a sudden, it was this goofy little triangle that became city property, and we just mowed it and trampled it forever. So we decided to give it back, so Tim is going to accept his back, which is one of the resolutions, the other one is the next portion next to it, but they, and they gone vacation, we can't get ahold of Archie.
Oh, he died, and so it's a family, where.
So it's the family we're dealing with, so we'll, we'll talk about forty-one next, but they're, they're together, but it's technically on two different pieces of property, so planning commission did approve the remnant land to go back to Thomas, and that resolution is in here, and we did talk about the tree, I believe, didn't we talk about that tree?
Trees, yes.
Yes.
It's current of the resolution.
Okay, so, uh, we unanimously approved it, and now it's up to you, if you have any questions, by all means, ask.
Wire removed to approve twenty, resolution twenty-two-five dash three-nine, remnant land given to Thomas, four-three-four Jackson Street.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Wire, second by Cummings to approve twenty-two-five dash thirty-nine, oh, there's no value, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post?
I'm staying.
Thank you, um, then resolution, the next one, number forty-one, that one is just informational at this point, so we will leave that until it comes back, and then resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-two, does everybody have the copy now? Jeanie, did you hear that with anyone else? But that we left, she sold.
No, that was DPW.
So resolution is simply, it is the same resolution in your packet, but it's got the details in that we're missing, so we needed to make sure that we had in there what that was, so this happens to be a portion of land, if anybody's familiar with, where the, um, Jefferson Street, where the, um, antique mall goes down that street, it's kind of a, a, it is a dead end, but oddly enough, they have this right there that went over the water, through the woods, all the way to Washington Street, but there's kind of houses and stuff, and garages that are there, so it's really not an easement, you can't use it, you can't do anything with it, so, um, we sent this to the planning commission, they reviewed the drawings, making sure it's got the right frontage and all that stuff, and he's going to redo the whole thing into one parcel, so we abandoned it, I think that's the right way to say it.
We're vacating right away.
Vacate.
Vacating right away, thank you, because it went nowhere, it was just a piece of property that was there, so now it's going to become his property, and then we'll be seeing drawings and, and future plans down the road, but this was the first step to allowing him to, uh, move work with his property, and on the table.
But the neighbors can still get to their property.
Oh, yeah, that, that doesn't change anything, I think one or two of them had.
Right.
I think it was just one.
That was two.
Was it two properties, right?
One, one residential property and one commercial property, and it's the old cage office that's, is antique mall room, they got it out.
Yeah, 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 that's the shit.
And then. And we can't.
Amy, bomb gardeners, alley kind of.
But we're only gonna big, we're starting at the culvert, for, for ditch to the west, so we're vacating, so it's not gonna affect any of the residents or property work.
And they were all here for this meeting too, it was a public hearing, so they all knew what was going on, they were all just said what was gonna be built, which we don't have that narrowed down yet, but, but this doesn't change anything for them, that their, their life is perfectly normal. Any other questions?
Yeah, like, life will be normal, I still, oh, I can't, always been, so it's.
It's just a road we've never updated, or fixed, or did anything.
It's an old brown road that rises from the city of Waterloo.
I'm familiar with it.
Yeah, a little bit.
Then there was your choice.
Yeah, yeah, so we can look at it one day when needed, but for now, it's, it's function.
Thomas make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-two, abandoning or vacating a portion of the public right away, between three-eighteen East Polk and two, two fourteen and two-twenty-four South Washington.
Griffin, a second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Griffin, to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-two, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried.
Just one question.
Sure.
In the top part, it says vacation, and it says whereas, it says vacate, which one is correct?
Vacate, either one's fine.
Either one's fine.
Yeah, it's synonymous.
Thank, okay, thank you, uh, resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-three, uh, appointing Chad Newmeyer to the parks board. Uh, Jo, what was her name? Jer, uh.
Jamie.
Parker.
Jamie Burke.
Yeah, Jamie Parker sold her house and moved out of the city limit, so her term was very short-lived, except, uh, Chad lives in Waterloo, and he already attended, he attend last night?
He didn't.
Yeah, he just went. So we have a person to fill Jamie for.
Austin Cool make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-three, appointing Chad to the parks board.
Cummings will second.
Motion by Austin Cool, second by Cummings, to approve Chad Newmark to the parks board, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carried, all right, finance, Charlie, resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-four.
Motion, this resolution is a rescinding of the contract, or the approval to purchase of squad car from Kaiser Madison, we ordered it, but they notified us that they could not fulfill that request, so we're going back out to bid for, um, the purchase of the squad car for next year, so I will so motion to rescind that ru- resolution with twenty-five forty-four.
Thomas will second.
Motion by Charlie Cool, second by Thomas, to approve rescinding resolution number twenty-two-five dash forty-four.
Yep, resolution twenty-five forty-four rescinding twenty-five thirty.
Correct, so we're approving resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-four of rescinding the third, correct, just like it's written, yes, thank you, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried. Charlie and Tim.
Tim.
Charlie and Tim.
Then resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-five for a new police car, Charlie?
The finance committee recommended deferring this until we receive this back, those are not due back before the seventeenth this month, so it will come back to a meeting in the future, I will make a motion to defer this resolution.
Wait a second.
Go ahead.
Motion by Charlie, second by Austin Cool, to, um, defer resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-five, so, ready, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried, all right, resolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-six, old business, uh, this is the county library tax exemption form with the approved dollar amount of two hundred and eight thousand dollars, which is the same as the last year.
Did you look at that, and did we do that with the previous, um.
Yes.
Yes.
Every year we talk. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Cummings will make that motion to approve the revolution twenty-two-five dash thirty-six, county library tax exemption.
Griffin, a second.
Motion by Cummings, second by Griffin, to approve twenty-two-five dash thirty-six, library exemption form, go go.
Cummings, yes?
Austin Cool, yes.
Austin Cool, yes.
Griffin, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Wire, yes.
House line, yes.
Motion carried. Future agenda items and announcements, I did bring this up at the, um, DPW, I attended the ELRIP meeting on Tuesday, Waterloo's getting just shy of twenty thousand dollars, because the town's governor doesn't ever partake, or very, very rarely, so this pot of money gets split up between three municipalities, this is our year for the ELRIP, um, and Lana, I believe, is putting that in our budget towards our project next year, which is North Van Buren, and then, um, Mitch and I will be getting together numbers for the supplement and discretionary funds, that is also a part of this, they're always in cycle, just we don't always have a project that actually works, we can't ever combine anything like the highway projects and things like that, because it's like considered double billing, so it has to be a standalone project, and they usually like it to be something longer, and in really bad shape, and twelve Van Buren Street qualifies, so we got some work to do on that, but we have to get that submitted here in the next, uh, month, so Chad and I am sure will be deeply involved in that conversation, and the grants are anywhere between fifty percent and ninety percent. Yeah. Yeah, so I'm also on the committee that helps pick the projects, and they want to be checked, I'm like, okay, good, I like that, so, anybody else got anything?
Yes. Finance committee is meeting with the fire department and the townships that they serve on Monday at seven PM at the fire station, if anyone's interested in attending.
Halloween retreat is October twenty-sixth, I know we'll be meeting before that, but people are very, like, they don't know about it, and it's always everywhere, but just so everyone is aware.
It's always this holiday before Halloween, and that's applies on the weekend. It's always this holiday before Halloween and Bud Light on the weekend or something.
Yep.
Beautiful.
Yep, and spectacular is on that Saturday.
Nice, it'll be fun weekend.
Yep.
Bring that back on the, two weeks?
I will, I will make sure.
All right. All right.